Thank you, Todd. All right, good evening. Welcome to the December 13th, 2021 Regular Business Meeting of Board of School Trustees, held in public with a start time of six o'clock this evening. If we all may rise, we'll ask Mr. Hoffman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. May be seated. Item two on this evening's agenda is the Board of School Trustees' Resolution of Accommodation Awards. We had the 2021 Corporate Christmas Card Design. We had Vivian Veronesi. She's an eighth grader at Robert A. Taft Middle School. She's the winning design for the front of the card. And Victoria Perez, eighth grader at Taft Middle Schools, the runner-up, then the design was used for the back of the card. Do we have a motion to approve the accommodations as presented?
No. Move. Second?
Moved by Mr. Babjack and second by Mr. Angel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now, I do think that, Diana, you said Vivian is not here yet, but she's better come. About Victoria? Hi, Victoria, you want to come forward? I'm going to step down. You can come on up. I don't know if anyone in our audience has not seen our card award. Miss Angel has one. So, Victoria, you were the runner-up and you were the back of the card. So, congratulations. This is a, is this the third year of the tradition?
Second.
Second. I'm glad we've had another one. So, this is our second year of the holiday card tradition. And then, Vivian, correct? Yep. Vivian was on the front of the card this year. So, congratulations. I have a recommendation to read to you. Thank you for joining us this evening. There we go. Resolution accommodations. The school board, Crown Point Board of School Trustees is honored to commend Vivian, is that, how do you pronounce, Veronesi?
Victoria.
I'm sorry, Victoria. Yes, Victoria Perez, I've got that one. Honored to commend Victoria Perez for notorious achievement. Here I resolve that the Board of School Trustees for the Crown Point Community School Corporation wishes to express sincere congratulations to Victoria Perez, eighth grade student at Robert A. Taft Middle School, creating the runner-up design for the back of the corporation's 2020, 2021 Christmas card. The Board of School Trustees publicly recognizes this achievement and renders it permanently to its minutes to be preserved for public posterity dated this 13th day of December 2021. Congratulations. If you don't mind holding your accommodation, Ms. Allen will take a picture, take a picture of you up here, okay? How about we do this? You can hold your, like to hold the card with it and she'll take a picture.
And Mom, Dad, feel free to stand up and get your pictures while.
This is, this is complete with a four-year scholarship. School of her choice, consequences.
Except the Tom Hoffman scholarship.
Yep, congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you. Wasn't on our agenda this evening, but it's kind of exciting to see Dr. Terrell. I shouldn't take out the plaque for you, Mr. Hoffman and stuff. But Mr. Hoffman was presented with an award from the ISBA, and we wanted to recognize that this evening, that is, this award was presented to Thomas Hoffman for outstanding service to the Indiana Public School Board members and school children during the COVID years. So, Mr. Hoffman, we all know how much you do and have done for the Crown Point Community School Corporation and for the ISBA as well, but congratulations to you. Maybe you could, you know, give us, share a little bit of what your involvement is with the.
Well, they, basically, I think the outgoing Board President presented these plaques to all of the directors. There are, there are 10 regions in the state of Indiana that comprise the Indiana School Boards Association, plus your slate of officers. So, we've got at least three officers. So, we've got 13 people on the Board of Directors, and you serve three-year terms and can be reappointed by the, by the, one of the School Boards Association Committees, make recommendation, and then you're accepted back on the board by the Board of Directors. But, you know, the last two years have been pretty difficult in public education. I think it's been beneficial, having been on that board, to find out what goes on throughout the state, see who's dealing with what kinds of problems, see where we are positioned with some of the leading schools in the state and things of that nature. But, you know, we're a very fortunate school corporation because we are increasing in student numbers versus decreasing. So, we've got funds available to do a lot of things that other school corporations unfortunately do not have. If you're a declining school corporation, many of those are in financial difficulty throughout the state, so. But it's been fun to be part of this organization. It's fun, and our board members have attended the Fall Conference, which is held every, every year, neither September or October, down in Indianapolis. But it's, it's an opportunity to get together with school board members from across the state and share ideas, so thank you for acknowledging this.
Yeah, Mr. Hoffman, thank you for representing Crown Point as well. Item three, patrons' comments. Patrons registered to comment on educational issues. We have found it beneficial just go ahead and to read through the guidelines each meeting so that everyone understands what, what is going on and what they will be asked to do to present comment. The Board will hear patrons, legal residents in Center Township or Winfield Township wishing to comment on educational issues at the Regular Business Meeting of the Board of School Trustees, held in public. Patrons must sign the sheet provided in the back of the boardroom prior to start of the meeting. When their names are called to address the Board, they will move to the podium in the front room, please state their name, spelling if necessary for record-keeping, addresses, and the topic they will be addressing. If patrons have prepared written statements on a topic, they may present at this time. A limit, a time limit of three minutes is allowed for each speaker. We ask Mr. Angel to be our timekeeper, and, you know, generally, he'll give you a, either a hand raise or a warning of a minute, 30 seconds, and then the buzzer will go off at the expired time. The portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to 20 minutes unless extended by a vote above the Board. Speakers are to refrain from speaking on personnel issues and student issues. I, I want to stress this one because it has come up in past meetings that these are comments to be on educational issues, not personnel. If something is said, I believe the way we handled it last time worked out okay. We'll give you a warning. At the second time, we would like, we will cut you off immediately, though, if we're, if we're not sticking to educational issues. Thank you. So, to begin this evening, we have Melissa Pineta. Please come forward.
My first name is Melissa, last name is Pineta, P-I-N-E-D-A. Address is 2601 West 135th Lane in Crown Point. Can everybody hear me first and foremost? Okay. My husband and I signed our middle child up for the new Bulldog Buddy preschool program as a general education student. We chose the program due to having a wonderful experience with the Exceptional Learners Program from 2019 to 2021 at the Learning Center with our oldest son, who is on the spectrum. The program at that point in time was something to be spoken for, about, and simply said truly amazing. The program and its educators engaged the children through interactive activities always involving academics at its core via structure and routine. This concept made academics achievable for children with special needs and in general. With this being said, of course, I chose this new program for our middle son. I love the idea of inclusion, and we are excited for him to begin his preschool journey, expecting a very similar program. Early on, I noted a difference in the program's curriculum. When asked, my son would simply say, "Just play," to describe his day. Just play? How does a general education child, let alone a child with special needs, learn everything needed for kindergarten when a majority of their preschool and pre-K experiences simply just play? And why were the parents never informed of this drastic difference in the program's curriculum or lack of? I was told by the principal of the Learning Center that a child can choose to play, and it's up to the instructors to engage with the child with questioning during this play. I ask you, though, how does a child with special needs, who has a language or speech impediment, answer directions directed to them when a majority of the time they don't even have the capacity to do so? How does a special needs student learn the routine that is expected of them in future kindergarten when their preschool provides them with such lack of? However, all children are supposed to be kindergarten-ready, and when they aren't allowed to formally or structurally address topics such as holding scissors, letters, shapes, et cetera, it's very difficult. I believe any parent would expect structured learning of academic basics in preschool and pre-K at minimum. We are setting our children up for increased behaviors and increased behavioral programs at the kindergarten level, especially those with special needs. It's my deep hope that you please look over the preschool program, involve those professionals such as special education instructors and those familiar with an IEP, and strongly address the current curriculum. Thank you so much.
Lauren Carney.
My name is Lauren Carney, 12082 Drive, Crown Point. I currently have a four-year-old son who attends the Bulldog Buddies preschool at Eisenhower Elementary. My son entered the ECD program at the age of three, being non-verbal and with a significant developmental delay. During the past few years, my son began to flourish inside and outside of the classroom walls. We have every educator, paraprofessional, therapist, and speech path to thank for his successes. This year, the program has drastically changed, not for the better. I had my reservations last spring when I heard about the transition to the Bulldog Buddies. As an educator myself, I know that this is no easy task to simply just launch a new program. New programs take time with purposeful transitions, small steps, and training. How was that done in fidelity in over one summer? I began asking the questions, why? Why in the world would this corporation rip apart a thriving program that was allowing their most vulnerable students, including my son, to achieve academic and social success? Why must, why was structure and routine removed from the classrooms and replaced with 60 minutes at minimum of open playtime? Why was the kindergarten readiness curriculum removed from the classroom? My son required schedule and routine to function successfully throughout any day. Why are you allowing him to choose what he wants versus what his needs are? Why were special education teachers ripped away from their students on their case load that they have been servicing? Why hasn't anyone in charge in the corporation asked, is this what's best for our students? I can guarantee if that question was asked, the response would be no. It seems as though whoever made the changes doesn't appear to know what best practice looks like, let alone what best, what best practice in special needs students, what they need and for all learners all around. The message is being sent loud and clear to parents in the community that Crown Point Community Schools does not care or value their students with special needs. If they did, this program would not have been turned inside out and overhauled completely. The program is forcing us to seek alternative community-based preschools for, preschool for our son in January. Imagine the setbacks that my son will now have to overcome with yet another transition to another program because this one is failing him. This program was supposed to be an extension of the successful ECD program that he was a part of for the past two years. My child has regressed significantly in his behaviors due to the lack of stability, structure, routine, and academics. In closing, I just want to restate that every teacher, paraprofessional, speech pathologist, and therapist has always had my son's best heart. I simply can't say the same for the individuals that are responsible for this program. I strongly hope that you look into it, and I encourage you to observe a classroom, read the scope and sequence of the adopted curriculum, read a child's IEP, and then ask yourself, would you send your own child through this program? Because I would assume you would not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Jessica Abel.
Jessica Abel, 249 East Greenwood Avenue, Crown Point. Same thing, Bulldog Buddies preschool. My son goes there five days a week this year. This is his third year there. He was in first steps through the state of Indiana from nine months old to three years. He was diagnosed, I'm sorry, with a speech delay. He had not a single word. He could not say mom, dad, nothing, until he started at the Learning Center at three years old. That 2019, 2020 school year was incredible for my family. To hear mama for the first time coming out of my child's mouth, that's an experience you can never get back, okay? And he was learning ABCs, numbers, colors, writing a name, and communicating in a structured, play-based setting. And even though he was thriving in this environment during all of this, my husband and I knew that when he finished the school year last year, he was not ready for kindergarten, so we chose to hold him back. This was before we heard about the Bulldog Buddies program. We signed him up at a new preschool, paid a tuition fee, and everything. Then Bulldog Buddies was a possibility for him, and it was supposed to be an extension of what he got the last two years. So, we entered him into the Bulldog Buddies program, and from my understanding, again, it was supposed to be an extension, and unfortunately, it was not. There is absolutely no structure nor academic learning whatsoever, just playtime. And this is why, or why is this the only preschool, of my knowledge, in Crown Point that doesn't follow a readiness program that aligns with the kindergarten curriculum at Crown Point? How are these kids going to be ready? They're not. For the entire two and a half hours these children are at school, they are not told no once. If they don't want to participate in an activity, they aren't even allowed to be encouraged to go and follow their teacher or other students. They are allowed to go and do as they please. This program is failing our children and will continue to fail each child that enters its door until something changes. And unfortunately, for kids like my child, this was his last year to be ready for kindergarten. And I have made plans to move him to a new preschool for second semester, and I hate to do that, but he needs to be ready for kindergarten, otherwise he is going to be farther behind than he already is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is it Megan or Megan Jordan?
Megan Jordan, 245 East 124th Place, Crown Point, Indiana. I come here as a mother, as well as a healthcare professional. I'm a clinical pharmacist that rounds in the critical care unit. I spent the last 21 months watching misunderstanding and misinformation take the lives or severely disable people in our community because of COVID-19. I really don't have much energy to give to COVID outside of work because of this, but here I am to ask you to follow the governor's COVID and quarantine guidelines. I believe this Board would acknowledge that the departments of health, the state, as well as Lake County, has better training and knowledge of the COVID-19 disease process, spread, and community impact. So, I was surprised and disappointed that you chose your own definition of unmasked close contact, as well as not quarantining close contacts, especially in light of high COVID-related hospitalizations in our local hospitals and with not giving children enough time to be fully vaccinated with the most recent EUA for five-to-eleven-year-olds. So, while I trust you to follow standards for education set forth by the state, I now ask you to reevaluate your COVID policies to respect the knowledge that has been put into the governor's policy that is supported by the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, the Indiana State Department of Health, as well as the Lake County Department of Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Brent Holding.
Brent Holding, 2576 West 127th Avenue in Crown Point. I want to echo a lot of the sentiments of the previous speaker. I share a lot of the same concerns, just about the timing and the execution of removing of the mask mandate in the schools. With the holiday season coming up, you know, people are going to be going around loved ones, ones they might not have seen all year, that they're going to see for the first time in two years in many cases, and it just seems like a very inopportune time to remove those mandates and potentially expose those people. You know, this was something I was passionate about going into this school year. You know, we made a very hard decision to send my son and my daughter this year to Lake Street, and, you know, my daughter ended up getting COVID. Luckily, she, she was okay. You know, I got a very mild case despite being vaccinated, and unfortunately, my wife got a more severe case and is still dealing with some long COVID symptoms now. And so, you know, that was with the mask policy in place, so I just worry with the even looser rules that are happening now, just more people are going to catch this and suffer unnecessarily when masking is so easy. I also just wanted to read quickly from, you know, the governor's executive order, just to make sure I understand and get my thoughts out about what the rules should be if this rule is in place. According to the Lake County, Indiana Health Department, what they sent out just, just late last week directly from the governor's executive order, unmasked students and staff who have become close contacts must complete the required quarantine. Students and staff that were exposed to a positive case within three feet in the classroom setting or six feet outside of the classroom setting shall quarantine for 14 days with no test needed or 10 days after the date of the last exposure. A little bit more about what the testing rules are there, but my understanding is that's not in place, and that concerns me. So, I just wanted to mention that and bring that to the Board's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. That concludes our patrons' comments for this evening. As some of you have been here before know that, you know, what we've had, had the discussion in past meetings, that it's an opportunity to comment, and the Board hears the comments that are made. However, there's not an opportunity there for any back and forth discussion, so thank you. Item four, consent agenda. Dr. Terrell.
For your consideration this evening, we have 4.1, multiple minutes from meetings that have taken place, 4.2, course additions at the high school, 4.3, year-end business office procedures, 4.4, personnel agenda, and then 4.5, the voucher checks as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. I heard a recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Is that moved by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Hoffman? Any questions or comments for Dr. Terrell on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to say it's pretty, pretty nice that we can offer a class in marine biology in a high school. That's pretty cool. All I got.
Anyone else? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And thank you, Dr. Terrell, on item five, actually, 5.1, is approval to accept funds from the Blackbaud Giving Fund. Mr. Gene Fermi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colonel Wheeler Middle School received $80 from the Blackbaud Giving Fund on behalf of AbbVie Employee Engagement Fund. It is the administration's recommendation that the Board accept this $80 fund.
Thank you, Mr. Gene Fermi. Heard the recommendation approved to accept $80 from the Blackbaud Giving Fund on behalf of the AbbVie Employee Engagement Fund for Colonel John Wheeler Middle School. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hoffman and second by Mr. Angel. Any questions or comments from Mr. Gene Fermi on the $80? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And 5.2, superintendent contract approval. Mr. Kewitt.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. In your packet is a proposed superintendent contract with the term of July 1st, 2021 to July 30th, 2024, with options for renewal. As required by Indiana Code, notice of the terms of the proposed contract published in the Northwest Indiana Times and Post Tribune and posted on the school corporation's website. On December 6th, 2021, the Board held the required public meeting to receive community input on the terms of the contract. As such, the Board has completed the legal requisite, or the requisite legal steps to consider action on the contract this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kewitt. Do you have a motion to approve the superintendent contract as presented in our packet?
I will. Second.
Moved by Mr. Hoffman and second by Mr. Smith. Any, any questions or comments before vote? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And 5.3, the 403B plan restatement. Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. From time to time, it becomes necessary to restate our 403B plan. Many times, it's due to IRS changes. They normally give you a year or two to implement those new requirements within the 403B plans. This one's also generated by the addition of the 403B contributions for the unused sick days that you approved a few months ago in the teacher agreement. So, with that, we've utilized ICE Miller to help us restate our 403B plan. You've seen the changes that are included in your packet, and at this point, I'd like to recommend approval of the Crown Point Community School Corporation 403B plan effective January 1, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Heard the recommendation to approve the Crown Point Community School Corporation 403B plan effective January 1, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Angel and second by Mr. Babjack. Do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Reese? Not? All those in.
You answered one of my questions before I asked it, and that's with whom we consulted regarding this, and so appreciate that information.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Reese? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Reese. And some information, information items this evening. We have a superintendent discussion groups, maybe Mr. Smith or Mr. Hoffman, anything from the, from the community to.
Nothing too pertinent. Cedar Lake has allocated $80,000 for facade grants next year. I don't even know if they're meeting this month for, for Christmas, but that's, that's virtually it. Nothing that would pertain to our, to our corporation directly.
Crown Point Redevelopment Commission has been primarily focused on facade grants these last few months, but the mayor did announce at the last meeting that this week 109th Avenue will be reopened, so that's good news for everybody before they probably go the next phase and close something else down, but at least it's scheduled for reopening this week. Also, the, there are discussions being had about making further improvements to Bulldog Park with the involvement of this, between the school corporation and the city, and those details will be forthcoming, hopefully, in the near future, but it's an exciting opportunity to, to benefit the users of that facility as, as well as the public.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Let's move to Director of Elementary Education, Mr. Mieres.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. I would just like to take this opportunity to.
I would just like to take this opportunity to wish really happy holidays to everybody involved in Crown Point Community School Corporation, and just to share my thanks to everyone who participates on a daily basis in making our corporation the success that it is, supporting our students and meeting their needs, from our custodial staff to transportation, to food services, our paras interventionist teachers, administrators. It really does take a village, and I just am so inspired every day by everybody's dedication and genuine desire to do what's right and do what's best for our kids. So I just wish everybody a happy holiday.
Thank you. Same to you. Director of Secondary Education, Mr. Gene Fermi.
Can I say what she said?
Just the same thing. Nothing to add tonight, but just wishing everybody happy holidays and hopefully a very Happy New Years to all you and our whole school community.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Fermi. Happy holidays to you also. Director of Exceptional Education, Ms. Paskus.
Good evening, Mr. Warney, members of the board. I do have a little update. We recently received a results-driven accountability determination, and that is almost like a grade that comes. It's a federal requirement that the state gives the Special Education Department each year, and it examines a multitude of factors, how our students with IEPs do on state assessment, how many are spending most of their day in gen ed, and then also just some compliance pieces, like our state review if we're submitting that on time. So we met requirements. We got the highest you could get rating on that. Last year, we had gotten needs assistance, and it's always from the results from the year previous. So we moved up. That's good.
Thank you, Ms. Paskus. Chief, Chief Human Resource Officer, Mr. Kewitt.
Thank you, Mr. Warney. Just a couple of items here from my area. First, also continuing with the thankfulness and bucket filling over there, you know, we'd like to show our appreciation for our custodial staff, food service staff, tech staff, and especially the transportation, our bus drivers. We've had a challenge, you know, with a very thin staff over there, and they've just done an incredible job with all-hands-on-deck attitude to make sure our students get to and from school safely every day. Looking forward to next year already, I can tell you that we're already setting meetings right now to take a look at enrollment and roll up into next year to start analyzing our staffing needs. I know that seems crazy, but it's time to start doing that. So as we come back from our break, we'll be taking a hard look at our student counts as we roll them up into the next grade level to see where our pressure points are and what our staffing needs might be as we enter into the spring hiring season. And finally, also when we return, we've been circling back on school safety here in the last two months in the Crown Point Community School Corporation. When you're away from COVID, you forget some of the protocols and practices. You're back in the building, we need to get those fresh back in our minds. On our in-service learning day, we had an entire support staff meeting at the Crown Point High School auditorium to review our safety protocols with cafeteria staff, bus drivers, secretaries, and then we're going to further drill down on that here for our roles here at central office. So when we return on our teacher workday, we'll be having a working meeting and lunch here to again review our protocols for safety and response protocols for our school corporation. So not always the best topics, but certainly necessary for us to dig into and make sure that we're staying on top of this and keeping those protocols in the front of our minds as we come to work every day. So thank you very much.
Just out of curiosity, were local law enforcement involved in those programs or just our staff members?
They're involved in everything we do. Now, they may not be present in all of our meetings, but for example, Dave Colson, Director of Safety and Security back there, he is a major liaison between the city, and so a lot of the information that he gathers and we gather in our meetings with our local responders, we bring in and share during our meetings with our staff. So we invite them in as much as possible to be a part of our meetings with all of our faculty and staff. Thanks, Tom.
Well, Mr. Kewitt, before we move to the business department, I want to say it's not a congratulations, but with reading about Ms. Kewitt in the newspaper and her being able to hand over her scoring record being broken this past week, or broken a couple weeks ago, but the only thing that I could think of when I read that article, and I'm a handful of years younger than yourself, but the role models that the Kewitts have been in the community, and that article just, it's, that's all that article oozed to me was the idea of you're all in education, and that opportunity to be role models at the same time is pretty amazing, and it's, I think that the two of you, it's like, that article is just a perfect wrap-up of what you've done for all of us. So thank you.
I appreciate it, Dave, and honestly, I mean, my wife's been an inspiration to a lot of folks in the community, not just for sports, but, you know, through her role as a teacher, but, you know, for, you know, she inspires me. I mean, she's just a great, great individual, so I appreciate the comments.
I don't want to get into when she graduated high school, but I would point out that there was no three-point line.
Yeah, that's right. Master of the mid-range jumper.
There's an asterisk. I know she would never say that.
No. Mr. Reese, anything from the business department this evening?
I'm going to keep the trend going, and I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
And Director of Communications, Ms. Allen.
Hi, good evening. I want to say thank you to Lindsay Eastling at Winfield Elementary. As we've started to prepare information for kindergarten preregistration in February, I was thinking it might be kind of fun to see kindergarten through a kindergartner's eyes, and so Ms. Eastling graciously welcomed our digital media specialist and I into her classroom over the course of two days, where her students have been wearing a GoPro camera so that we can put it together in a video and see what kindergarten looks like. The footage has been really fun to watch. The first day, I left and sat down in the car and said kindergarten is exhausting, and it was, but it's been a lot of fun, and I really appreciate her inviting us to her classroom.
Welcome to the big people's table.
And, sound, I don't remember if I mentioned this last, last board meeting, but when we had the groundbreaking out at, for the new Taft Middle School. Did you guys catch the thank you that we received with the, did you see the barcode on the back or the scanner on the back?
Thank you, but I don't remember the barcode.
Okay, so yeah, I was thinking it could get slipped past pretty easily, but, so she, with the thank you, there's a picture, "Thank you for joining the ceremony." What they did was you can, you can go to the, what is it? I don't know, QR code and see several of our pictures. Maybe not so cool for us, I mean, me, but I'm assuming that some of the students that were involved received the same, same thing that they could share with their, their families. So I don't know, these little touches that, you know, I feel like each meeting, we've kind of complimented you for something, I think is well-deserved, but these little touches that, you know, keep being added to what goes out is pretty neat, so thank you. So you missed the, you missed it.
I don't like that at restaurants. I love seeing my, I'm an old guy with my technology skills.
Right. I'll hand it over to Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Terrell.
Thank you. This evening while we're meeting, our plans for the high school are actually going to the planning committee tonight with the city, so we're excited about that, and we'll start seeing progress there. If you've been around the high school recently, you'll notice that Skilman's trailer has been set up, so it's about to get real, real, very quickly here, so looking forward to the beginning of what is going to extend over the next several years as we expand the high school as well. Also, looking at our middle school plans, Taft is going well and on schedule. The elementary plans for both MacArthur and Timothy Ball are in the final stages, and then we're beginning our work on Wheeler with some meetings tomorrow, looking at several possibilities there, also with the addition of an auditorium at Wheeler Middle School as well, which will be a really nice asset for our students and teachers there. As was mentioned before, just thankful for the mayor and his leadership, and as we continue our partnership and growing that with the city, I look forward to some opportunities that we'll be sharing with you in the coming months, once we get into the new year there. And again, following suit with, as was mentioned already, want to thank our teachers and staff. Also, really feel a need to point out our nurses again. It seems like every time we talk about people who are going above and beyond, they're the ones that come up, and they continue to do that, so we want to thank them as well, and just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and hopefully, everybody will get a couple of weeks to just kind of get away from everything, take a deep breath, reconnect with family, and come back January ready to go. Thank you.
Talk about not wanting to mention when I graduated and so forth, but you, it's, suggests maybe I've been around too long, when we're remodeling all these schools that were brand-new schools since I've been on this board, and it kind of reminds me of having been a graduate of Lowell High School. I still refer to that as the new high school down at Lowell, and it's, it's over 50 years old, so.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Other business of the board of school trustees, we have the scheduled reorganization meeting in January. Dr. Terrell, would you like us to throw some dates out this evening to kind of get to consider that now?
Yeah. If you wouldn't mind. I think the rule is it has to be within 15 days.
We usually do it somewhere around the 6th, 7th, or 8th. Let's see, do we have?
Has to be before the 15th, so.
While we're all together, we could get a tentative date out there and then confirm it. Let's see, January 5th or 6th would be a Wednesday or Thursday to start the year?
January 5th. 6th would be the morning?
Do a morning meeting, 7:30 meeting? We could ask, ask Ms. Green to just get a confirm out there for sometime between now and then.
January 6th, 7:30 in the morning, Diane?
As we've discussed before, we could develop a rotation of our positions or have further conversations about whatever may take place there, but it's always open for discussion. How about other business? Anything else that we'd like to cover this evening? I think we could have a, share a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment for Todd and just thank you for, I know we handled your contract tonight, but I want to thank you for trusting us in this process too, through, you know, almost three years ago, and you're on the low end of the scale for league schools, and, you know, we asked that you come aboard and prove yourself to some degree, and you've done that, and I feel, you know, it's been well-earned and deserved, and appreciate your efforts for everything you've done for the school corporation, so well done.
Thank you.
If anybody else is thinking at the moment, I do have a thought, I just want to kind of take a step back. The meetings went quick this time between November and December, but I would like to keep pushing for a retreat in, you know, February, March. Mr. Hoffman, I think we'd like to kind of work around whether, if you may be, on heading out of town for a little bit. And then, you know, also just throw the thought out there, Brian, I think you watched the meeting last month, you weren't able to be here, but, you know, just that my idea is still that it's an opportunity to have a conversation, not so much asking for administrators to present these plans and spend time on, you know, preparing for us, but just to sit down and have some conversation about things that are taking place. So, you know, I'd be happy to filter those to Dr. Terrell if anybody has, you know, ideas in the next couple of weeks to send them to me. We've all discussed, you know, that, I think we all agree that short-term, long-term budget discussion is something that need, you know, needs to be discussed, just be responsible for all the spending that's taking place. I think we're in a good position. We've been told we're in a good position, but we want to have that, that extra conversation about it. Mr. Reese, I know that that'll be something that we ask for your help with. I think that one of the other topics is on the, kind of for me, is just the follow-through on the special audit that took place, and I think some, not necessarily because of the comments that came up tonight, but definitely they pushed forward that we, while doing that review, you know, just get a little bit of a review of our Bulldog Buddy program at the same time. Assuming Ms. Paskus would be involved in even with that, and just all the random.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, we kind of approved the, we got the bonds or any kind of school improvement project that's going to be going, it's going to be touching every school, I'd kind of like a refresh of like what that schedule looks like to one of the, just a 30,000-foot view of kind of a reminder of what schools are getting what, because everybody's, every building is getting touched, getting something added to it. Kind of like to see that, just review that again.
I think we probably, probably want to have some just open discussion, discussion about the sizes of the buildings, and when this is all done, where, you know, where things are going to shake out with the hopeful enrollment and how that might be accomplished.
Right, because we're adding classrooms, in some cases, we're adding levels to buildings, right? In some cases, playgrounds, all that stuff. I'd just kind of like to see a quick snapshot of that again.
So if, if we can get those bullets more formal and push them through to Dr. Terrell as to, you know, hey, what's just a discussion with somebody versus actually asking for information to be presented? That's, I think, something we've learned from our past is not to ask the administrators to, it's kind of not the right choice of words, but to waste energy presenting something when all we're looking for is a little bit of a conversation, so. Dr. Terrell, can you take, you've explained it well to the board, but can you give us one more explanation of the, if we hit a trigger on our current plan? We hit the 2% trigger with the 14 days and the seven-day rolling average?
Yeah.
Refresh us on how that would take place if a?
Yes, I can, and I'll actually ask Artie and Brooke to jump in here as they're dealing with this daily, making sure that we keep track of it. In essence, what we're doing is in each building, as we, as positive cases are reported to the buildings, we then do our contact tracing with that. We're keeping track of the number of positive cases within the building, and if that were to hit that 2% mark of the population of the building, then that would trigger masks being worn for that period of time until we see, and that, the clock does not start until it drops below that 2% mark. So if that takes three days to drop below, then it would start on that fourth day. Artie, Brooke, would you guys jump in there with any additional information that you can provide?
No, I think the biggest transition in understanding the data, I think, as I've worked with employees and individuals that have called, is helping them understand that it's not the day the information's reported to our office, then I can transfer it over to Brooke to get put up on the chart. It has to do with the last day of exposure. So there were times when we would get in the past, like 10 or 12 sheets in one day, you know, and that would go up in the chart in the way we used to do it, and you would think that all that happened on that day, well, those exposures kind of reached back to days prior, when that all started, if you will. So we're, we're trying to attach it to the last day of exposure to understand that actual impact on the building and when it, when it happened. And again, just kind of sliding back to what Dr. Terrell was saying about the nurses, I mean, it's just, and it's really just the nurses in the front office. I was at MacArthur today doing, reading in a classroom, and, you know, they really do work so hard to run the schools up there in front and then work with, with this data tracking mechanism to get to us at central office and then to Brooke to get up on the web. So it's, it's just a, it's been a really big, big process, but I think our office staffs have just been doing a tremendous job turning it around as fast as they can.
I think I want, I just honestly wanted to bring it up this evening because we have received some emails to the board. There's some people that are obviously not present this evening, and if anybody is watching to some clarity about the, you know, when the, when the trigger takes place, and I think with the break coming up, so it's, the break's going to solve, you know, theoretically solve the 14-day problem for us in the near future, but when we get back in January, as you said, Dr. Terrell, you, you know, we, we hit the 2% trigger, and we're not going to start our 14-day count until we fall below that. If we go for five more days and it happens to spike above again, well, it's going to keep rolling, rolling, rolling until that amount of time we accomplish to be mask optional once again.
I could add one thing. So we've had two buildings who have had to go back to masks being required. Want to thank our parents and our students. It's been a smooth process as we've gone through that. The messaging has gone out, and students have responded rather quickly and appropriately with that. Reports coming in from the rest of our buildings. We have students, we have staff members who are still choosing to wear a mask, and that's going well. I know there's some concern about if students are getting bullied over masks or what that would look like. or what that would look like. Kids are kids, and there are times that I'm sure things have been said, but we're not seeing that as a, as a large issue right now. I think one of the things that COVID has taught us with our kids is they're usually the quickest to adjust to different things, and they continue to be so even in this area. So, having been at choir concerts, orchestra concerts, band concerts, athletic events, drama productions in the last few weeks, some of our kids choose to wear masks even while they're performing and doing different things there, and that's okay and accepted as it is. So, again, proud of the way that our, our students, our teachers, staff members are responding to yet another challenge as we continue to move through this.
Before we go to board statements of appreciation, any other, other business? There just opportunity to have a conversation?
You know, just to follow up on that, I think the plan with, with the masking is the first time we've seen it where it's an objective standard. There, there's a standard in place that there's no argument, there's no worrying about, do we have cases, do we not have cases? It's very simple. If there's cases and it's rising, we mask up. You know, throughout the history of our schools since we've been doing this with masking, there have been times when some schools have one positive case and every, every child in the school's masked up. I'm not sure if that makes the most sense under those, under those guidelines, and I feel, you know, for me, the more and more I think about this, it seems to make sense. As positive cases go up, you, you take measures, what we call control measures, and we've seen that the governors use that order to adjust accordingly. And there have been other times when we have quarantined many, many kids. It is extremely disruptive and we've had many emails, complaints from parents by quarantining healthy children. And that's not, that's not good for education or the students. So, the more I've considered this and watched this unfold with the two schools, I'm more comfortable with it, not less, and believe it is the proper, the proper plan. And I felt the need to respond. I know we have many people who come and comment here both ways over the last few months, and I just want everyone to know, we do listen to you. We do see your emails. We, we, you know, we can't always respond directly at you, but if anybody's ever felt offended or as if we're not paying attention or not listening, I know we received one email in particular where, where that was raised, that, you know, we were being rude and not listening, and I want to comment on that and say that, you know, I'm sorry if that was me or any other board member. I don't think that's the intentions of the board. We do want to listen, and I want to thank those that spoke tonight, because I thought it was very civil, very professional, and I'm proud of Crown Point, because I feel like overall Crown Point throughout the last two years has, has handled themselves very well, and that makes me proud to live in this community and to live amongst you guys and serve you guys. So, I just felt the need to say, to make that statement. You know, circumstances could change and the board could review the plan again, and, you know, that could happen. And so, I think the one thing with this board in particular is that we've, we've always been willing to reconsider and willing to change. You know, it's not, this is not an easy process, and so I just felt the need to add that to make those, make those comments. Thanks.
Well, we're on the point of prior comments. I don't know if it was the last meeting, but we were asked why we require people to state their address, and I tried to explain because our policy requires the person who wishes to speak to be a member of this community. We get emails from the Indiana School Boards Association on a daily basis with magazine articles or newspaper articles from school corporations throughout the state, and in reading through those today, there were at least three school corporations who had reported that there were outside groups having no affiliation with their school corporation showing up at their school board meetings wanting to talk on various topics. And so, that's, that's part of the justification for limiting it to our people, where we want to know what concerns you, not what somebody's agenda might be coming in from the outside. So, we appreciate your willingness to abide by that restriction.
Okay, thank you. Let's move forward to board statements of appreciation and recognition. Let's start with Mr. Smith.
Thank you, David. Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, wish all our administrators, our teachers, our students, parents, just Merry Christmas to everybody. I hope everybody has a blessed Christmas, get time away, refresh, and just again, am pleased to be a part of seeing what's occurring in Crown Point, and I know sometimes we get distracted and have had many distractions over the last 18 months, but it's phenomenal what's been accomplished and where the direction of the corporation's going, the, the hard work that's been done. I think our teachers are as good as any for a long way, for miles and miles and miles. So, we are blessed to have the, the school corporation we have and the people and the individuals we have to work in the corporation, and I think they deserve to be honored, especially before the Christmas holiday. So, that's it. Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's all I got. Hope everybody gets, enjoys their time with their families, healthy, healthy and happy.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
While this time of year is traditionally observed as a Christian holiday, I want to reach out to people of other faiths and encourage them to feel free to, to celebrate their own religious events or holidays. Having just recently concluded Hanukkah, my significant other is of the Jewish faith, and so you have to come to appreciate other, other people's religious beliefs and their celebrations as well. So, we want to welcome those things within our school corporation. As far as the commendation award, had the opportunity on Wednesday of last week to hear the Crown Point High School Choir under the direction of Mr. Woods come to our local Rotary Club meeting, which they do every year at Christmas time, and what a just wonderful program. Each year, it seems to get better, and I don't know how it can because it's, it's so good to start with. So, wanted to give them a shout-out.
Recently, we received, I don't know if it's official yet, but Coach Micret, our girls' soccer coach, for the last 14 years, somewhere around there. I might have the years wrong, but I know Diana will look it up before she sends it out. We want to congratulate him on his retirement from girls. He's done wonderful things with those ladies, my daughter being one of those a few years back. So, congratulations, Coach Micret. I know he's got kids entering those ages where you hustle and move and shake every day of the week, and so I think he's part of that, had to do with that decision. So, just congratulations, Coach Micret, for the years he put in teaching our girls in the Crown Point community. And if anything, I know there's sentiments exactly, but if we haven't learned anything in the last two years of this COVID, it's not to take anything for granted, so I would just pass that along and never know when something might occur, such as tornadoes in Kentucky and things like that. So, just make sure you acknowledge those that are close to you and you say what you need to say to those individuals on a daily basis, so you don't feel regrets later on. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. For myself, just keeping up with the news, and our wrestling program continues to do awesome things. The Cathedral, getting over the hurdle of Cathedral recently, I know is a big deal, and I love hearing the kids with their comments of them knowing that that was a hurdle and knowing what they needed to accomplish and the pride of getting it done the way they did. It's a great program, and wish them the best the rest of the year, as well as all our sports programs doing, you know, good things this, this winter as well. And for myself also, Merry Christmas to everybody, have a Happy New Year. I want to, I will admit that at the beginning of the school year, I was one of the board members not so happy with the calendar. I thought that maybe we should push summer a little further and take all the, all the opportunity we could out of the summer, but the feedback, I think recently, might have ran into Mr. Jim Fermi somewhere the, the other, the other day to just, to wrap up the semester before the break. It's pretty, pretty neat, and I think everybody's very appreciative of that, and I think as we see here now, it's a, really happy to be on that calendar. And just for myself, I, I say it often, and it's not just to say it, but just proud to be a part of the team and happy to be a part of the educational team here in Crown Point. It really means a lot to me and with that. So, Merry Christmas to everybody. Anything else this evening? Motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Moved by Mr. Angel, second by Mr. Hoffman. All's in favor, sing by the saying, "Aye." Aye? Opposed? Post carried by zero.